Chairman, we're now live.
Okay, thank you. So, good morning, everyone, and welcome to this online meeting of the Public Protection and Community Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Nigel Pepper, and I'm the chairman of this committee. This is a formal public meeting, and the audio feed of the meeting is being broadcast via the county council's website. I'd like to welcome the members of the press and public who are listening to this online. Before we begin, I would like to confirm who is present. Nick Harrison, Democratic Services Officer, will ask members to indicate their presence after their name is called. When invited to speak, you should unmute your microphones and switch on your video. When you are not participating in the meeting, please make sure you have muted your microphone and switched off your video. So, over to you, Nick.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Aaron. Councillor Aaron?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Clark?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
Present.
Councillor Cooper? Councillor Cooper? No. Councillor Oxby?
Present.
Councillor Pepper?
Present.
Councillor Stokes?
Present.
Councillor Turner? Councillor Mrs Wooton?
Present.
Councillor Ray Wooton?
Present.
Thank you, that's it, chairman.
Okay, thank you. Just before we move on, as anyone not had their name called out who is attending today, if so, please speak now.
Chairman, excuse me, chairman, I'm not a member of the committee, but I'm executive councillor for at least one item.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Young.
Thank you, I've noted that.
Okay, thank you. I would like to ask members of the committee and other participants to type 'speak' in the chat when you wish to ask a question or make a contribution. Also, just a reminder, please turn off your microphone when not participating in the meeting. And can I also ask that members who are intending to leave the meeting indicate using the chat function. Officers do not need to do so. We will now move on to the formal agenda. So, item one is apologies for absence from replacement members. Nick, have you got any apologies?
Yes, just one, chairman, councillor Mrs Lawton.
Thank you. No replacement members for councillor Lawton?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Item two, declarations of members' interest. Do members have any interest to declare? If so, please type 'speak' in the meeting chat now. Okay, I think appearing, thank you. Item three, the minutes of the previous meeting held on the fifteenth of September. This item is to confirm the minutes of our previous meeting held on the fifteenth of September, twenty twenty, as a correct record. Excuse me. I'll briefly go through the pages. So, starting on page six. Page seven. Page eight. Nine. And finally, finally, page ten. Can I ask for a proposer and seconder for those minutes, please?
I'll propose, as Mr Chairman, councillor Don Oxby here.
Okay, so councillor Oxby has proposed, however, we've got a seconder there.
I'll second it, chairman.
Okay, councillor Ray Wooton is seconded. We will now vote on the minutes. You're voting on whether you agree that the minutes are a correct record. Nick will call out the name of each member present in alphabetical order. And you'll have to state for, against, or abstain. So, over to you again, Nick.
Thank you, councillor Aaron?
For.
Councillor Clark? Councillor Cook?
For.
Councillor Oxby?
Or.
Councillor Pepper?
For.
Councillor Stokes?
For.
Councillor Turner? Councillor Mrs Wooton?
All.
Councillor Ray Wooton?
All.
Thank you, that's unanimous, chairman.
Okay, so those minutes are agreed, thank you. Item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and chief officers. I have a couple of announcements. One is that I attended the executive meeting on the sixth of October. When one of the items debated was the Lynx Fire and Rescue Integrated Risk Management Plan. The executive took on board the issues raised by this committee, particularly the student accommodation in Lincoln, and the low response rate to the consultation. I really felt and witnessed at first hand that this committee did an excellent job in scrutinising the IRMP, all for the common good of the report, so thank you all for that. And secondly, have we got Daniel with us today? I didn't see him on there anywhere, but just to say that on behalf of this committee, I'd like to give sincere thanks to Daniel for his help and support over the years. This is Daniel's last meeting of the Public Protection and Community Scrutiny Committee. Daniel tells me that he has been successful in securing a new role in the registration department. Is Daniel there, and would you like to comment on that?
Yes, chairman, thank you very much for your kind comments.
You're welcome, Daniel, we have our blessing and best wishes from this committee.
Thank you.
So, have we got any executive councillors wishing to speak?
Yes, thank you, chairman. Uh, yeah, councillor Nick Worth, um, just like to say, I'm pleased to confirm that Les Britzman, who's our chief fire officer, um, has agreed to take up a second opportunity within the wider county council team. Les will lead a strategic corporate project focused on a full review and recommissioning of our back office services. As a result, Les will leave his role as chief fire officer in order to take on this opportunity on the sixteenth of November. I know Les would like me to say how much he's enjoyed his time as Lincolnshire's chief fire officer, and I can add that I'm immensely proud of Les's many achievements. Um, he has been, had a fairly full-on role since he took on that position. Um, we've not only moved the control room to Nettlem, but still bedding around, bedding down in the new joint headquarters. Um, we've, um, had the new, complete new fleet of vehicles. Um, uh, Les is particularly proud, I know, and I am, that he's really championed mental health, which has been a real issue, particularly with Covid. Um, and of course, he's had to deal with the whole Covid issue as well, so, um, he's done a fantastic job, and I'd like to make note of that. Um, in the meantime, Debbie, the chief executive, myself, will be talking to individuals uh, about an interim chief fire officer arrangement. Um, we're likely to know that position, and we will, of course, let you know the outcome of that, probably within the next week. Um, and that will probably be a position that will remain in place for the next year. Um, and that is primarily because we've got an HMIC FRAS inspection in the spring, um, and we want to ensure we've got some continuity through that process. Um, interim arrangements will need to focus on supporting fire and rescue and emergency planning. Um, so that will mean that Public Protection Service, including community safety, trading standards, coroners and registration services will transfer to Andrew Crookham. I think that's all, thank you, chairman.
Okay, thank you councillor Worth. I think Les wishes to speak, so, you there, Les?
Yes, sir, thank you, chairman, uh, thank you, Nick, for those kind words, much appreciated. Um, yes, it's been a, it's been a whistle for Dan's Council on Fire and Rescue since I took on the role in April two thousand and nineteen, but extremely enjoyable. You know, I've enjoyed working with fire and rescue and also, um, bringing fire and rescue much closer to the county council, engaging much more with councillors in our cog visits and so on, and working as part of the corporate leadership team, which has been absolutely brilliant. So, I'll be supporting the county council from another angle, and working on this corporate project, looking at all our services. Of course, you know, I'll maintain that concept with fire and rescue, and support fire and county council emergency planning from however I can. Um, so I look forward to that. Um, no doubt, I'll see you all in another capacity, but I'm very much looking forward to taking on that role from the sixteenth. So, thank you, chair, thank you, Nick.
Yeah, thank you, Les, and this committee endorses the kind words said by councillor Worth, and I think I also did send you an email.
You did, thank you.
For your, for your support and help. Councillor Young, have you got any comments for us? Councillor Young, I think you may be muted.
Sorry, um, Nick Worth has said much of what I was going to say. Um, all I would add at this stage is that, um, there are other consequential changes. Uh, according to, and Stacey Coulson is coming back from the, uh, police, uh, next week. Um, but I will be issuing a sheet paper explaining all those changes as soon as I can. And, um, now please, again, uh, say echo rather what Nick has said with regard to, um, Les. Uh, I wish you well, Les, enjoyed working with you. Um, and I'm sure we will shake up quite a bit when you move on to your new post. Thanks.
Okay, thank you all for that. Any chief officers wish to make any comments, other than Les, who of course has already spoken? Councillor Lindsay Corrie wishes to speak.
Thank you, chairman, I also want to echo, um, the words of councillor Nick Worth. Um, I want to thank Les for all his help and support. Um, when I was, um, new to the role of the executive support member, um, working with Nick, um, Les very kindly showed me the ropes, especially, um, on, um, when we did the cog visits. Um, oh gosh, I really miss those. And, um, just one question, why are all the cog visits and the, the training exercises always when it's freezing? Um, Les, I remember one occasion, Les very kindly lent me a very warm jacket when I had attended an event and I wasn't dressed formally enough, so, and thank you to Les for everything that you've done and making me very welcome to the fire and rescue team, and, um, good luck in your exciting new role, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Corrie, very kind words there, thank you. Okay, no further be wishing to speak, so we'll move on to item five, which is the future of the heritage service in Lincolnshire. This report provides a vision for heritage services, and in this decision is due, sorry, start again. This report provides a vision for heritage services, and this decision is due to be considered by the executive on the third of November twenty twenty. The views of the scrutiny committee will be reported to the executive as part of the consideration of this item. The item will be presented by Will Mason, head of culture. If you'd like to input on this item, please type 'speak' in the chat thread, we will take questions at the end of the report. Over to you, Will.
Thank you, chairman, actually, I'd like to just give the opportunity to councillor Worth, who I believe wants to, um, speak first, and then I can, I can pick up afterwards, if that's okay.
Okay, councillor Worth.
Yeah, thank you for that, Will, and thank you, chairman. Um, we're setting out our plan for the future of the heritage services in our county to make it much more accessible to all. Our heritage is, of course, of national and international importance, and we want everyone to have the chance to see and explore the great things about the county. So, today, we're setting out our six-point plan for the future, so you can be confident that we're thinking long-term on how we can deliver our offering in the best way possible. And also, so you can continue to make great memories and enjoy our amazing county. So firstly, we want to have a strong voice at a national level. We will work together as Greater Lincolnshire to have a strong and unified voice to ensure we are heard at a national level. We want to be able to influence decisions, bring funding and investment, work with national and international cultural institutions, and make sure you have access to the best blockbuster exhibitions and events. Secondly, we want to embrace Lincolnshire as a whole, making heritage and art available to all. We're a vast and varied county with so many things to be proud of, and many of these have played a key role in British and world history. This means we have some inspirational artefacts, architecturally brilliant buildings, and a wonderful natural environment, which we will make available for everyone to enjoy now and in the future. Thirdly, we want to tell the story of the county. We know we need to be creative. Together with our partners, sponsors and private institutions, we will work to create a strong identity with a narrative to tell the story of our exciting county, bringing together our culture and history in a unique way, making more opportunities and reasons for you and families to visit and explore attractions across the county. Fourthly, we want to get the investment that our county deserves. We work differently with our current partners and collaborate with new ones across the whole of Greater Lincolnshire to create a powerful and attractive offer. We believe a truly unified cultural offering is the best way forward for us to make the best use for external funding, which is urgently needed and overdue. Further heritage investment will provide a real boost to the economy, tourism, and make a significant difference to attracting new businesses and visitors, visitors coming to this county. It will benefit everyone. We want to make Lincolnshire an even greater place to live, work, visit and study. Fifthly, we want to make memories county-wide. We want to create centres of excellence, which will bring together our museums, art collections, archives and aviation heritage in a number of well-placed sites across the county, allowing people to see more of the county's rich treasures on display. And lastly, we want great art and culture. We will continue to bring nationally recognised and world-renowned art and cultural exhibitions and installations to our attractions across the county, which will allow you to have access to some of the most amazing experiences to make new and long-lasting memories. We want to show off Lincolnshire and its culture to its full potential. We're really excited for the future, and we hope you, as a committee, will be too. Thank you, chairman, happy to take, and I'm sure Will will ask any, answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Uh, Will will do the presentation, we'll take questions after, but I'm aware that councillor Clark wished to speak. I don't know whether I may have missed it earlier, so councillor Clark, have you got something to say at this point?
No, thank you, chair, it was to do with this item, so I'll wait till the end, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you, so over to you then, Will.
Thank you, chairman, uh, there's, actually councillor Worth has summed up the vision very, very well, um, so there's a huge amount to add at this stage. I, I think it's quite important to say that not only, um, like councillor Worth, we're very excited about this vision and about the opportunity for Greater Lincolnshire to work together, for coming together, uh, not just of the traditional partners that we've worked with so successfully over the years, but broadening that out to include partners, partners in north and north-east Lincolnshire, but also to explore working with partners that we've never worked with before. There's, there's a lot of strength in the fact that heritage in this culture actually doesn't sit within a specific area, either geographically or in terms of governance, that, that the strength is across the fact that we have authority-run buildings, we have commercially-run buildings, we're private-run buildings, and, and that actually is really part of the strength that this county has. I, I think the other thing that I wanted to say as well is that, um, what's worked really well with this vision is, is how it's merged from the work that we, that we've done over the last year, and the conversations that we've brought to scrutiny over the last couple of years. And it's quite exciting that what we're thinking about now is, is both broader and deeper, but it is an extension of those principles that we've talked about in these meetings before. And the principles of making sure that it's sustainable, uh, making sure that we open up our heritage and our culture to the widest possible audience. And I think only by thinking in terms of Greater Lincolnshire in its entirety are we actually having the opportunity to really fulfil that potential as much as possible.
Okay, Will, thank you for that. So, over to councillor Clark.
Thank you, chairman, uh, reading the papers, I have a few concerns. One of them is under one point four, where it says, um, we will approach a partnership working in a different way, et cetera, working with partners, private companies, and persons of importance and influence. Number one point, should we be also working with the residents? But I'm not sure what part of all this scheme the private companies are playing in it. It almost seems, reading the paper, it's, we're agreeing openly that private companies can come in and, you know, um, take over the running of it. The second point, the most important one, is, um, an issue I've raised before at this committee, and I would like at this, uh, opportunity to put a motion forward that if the council is serious about the future supersites, they should include the gallery in the collection of a supersite, thus keeping the Usher Gallery as it is now, which has been appreciated by generations of people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Clark.
Happy.
Councillor Worth, I think you want, wish to come in at this point, yeah?
Happy to start off, welcome, fill in. Uh, the, thanks, Kev, for, for the questions. Um, yeah, the bit around private companies, uh, I think what we're saying here, this isn't a focus particularly on private companies. Uh, this is a focus on engaging with as many people as we possibly can, um, whether that's in the public sector, the private sector, and of course, the public as well. Um, so no particular focus on private companies, but it's probably important to point out that when you're looking for investment, and some big investment that we'll be looking for in the future, um, we quite often have to match public funds with private, uh, investment as well. Um, and often, the more private investment you can bring in, the more public investment you can bring in, so one matches across, across the other. So, it's not just about, uh, private companies. Um, there are also a lot of influential people out there that can help us to try and bring that funding in as well. So, that's, uh, hopefully that's answered some of that question. Uh, supersites, the whole concept of supersites is about, uh, making heritage and culture sustainable in the future. Uh, we know from our experience over the last several years that the microsites and places like the Usher Gallery are not financially sustainable, uh, in their own right. Um, and making very clear about the Usher Gallery, um, it could still be part of that, uh, future for us, um, but it has to be sustainable. Um, we've made it very clear that the way to make that sustainable is to have the art gallery on the whole of that bottom floor, and then we can have, uh, the registration service upstairs. Um, and this is not, make it clear that the registration service coming in there is not about making, uh, a saving for the county council. It is actually about generating income to actually help make the whole place sustainable. If we can do that, then that's absolutely great, um, we can still, uh, encourage and, and make use of the Usher Gallery. Um, but it is not sustainable as it currently stands, uh, as a single art gallery. And, uh, Will, you may want to come in on anything?
Yeah, Will.
Yeah, I just, just building on what, what you've, you've said, which I think answers it very well. When we're talking about private companies, it's also about acknowledging that there is expertise um, out there in Greater Lincolnshire that we can work with to help us. Now, you know, this may be more likely to be in the fields of technology, about environmental sustainability. Um, so it's about making sure that we're thinking differently, that we're not just kind of doing what we've always done. And as we look to grow and develop and get the most out of the counties, and by county, again, it's about Greater Lincolnshire, the old historic county, to get the most out of the county's heritage. It's about thinking in a different way and embracing new ways of looking at these partnerships. It's, it's not about handing over these assets, it's about acknowledging that there is a strength in the fact that all of these assets are managed in a different way, and that actually, if we bring lots of different partners together, we can, we can just get the most out of it. In terms of working with our communities, absolutely agree, I think that's completely vital. Um, I would encourage everyone that is, that is here today in this virtual meeting to go to the collection at the moment, where our largest temporary exhibition gallery actually has on an exhibition the Lincolnshire's Wildlife Photography of the Year exhibition, which has been co-judged by councillor Worth. This is an exhibition that has more than forty pieces of work on display, as well as a rolling video, um, presentation of all of the other applications, of pieces of work by members of Lincolnshire being showcased in our primary museum. And I have to say, the quality is absolutely outstanding. It would match any photographic exhibition I've ever seen anywhere in the world. And I think it's a prime example of what we can do when we work together with our communities and look at how we can do this from a co-curation perspective.
Okay, thank you, Will. Will, we have this wide vision for the whole of Lincolnshire, including North Lincolnshire, North, North East Lincolnshire. Have we been liaising with them, have we got their consent, or are we just going ahead with this, assuming it'll be okay?
Now, our leader has had initial conversations with their leaders. Obviously, we now need to go through the democratic process, which is why we're, we're here today, and it's going to executive next week. But there has been that initial conversation.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Corrie?
Um, thank you, chairman, it's, um, understandable why, um, some people in the wider community may feel comfortable with the status quo, and, but that model has diminishing returns. And what people want from their, um, culture and heritage and, um, experience and offers is, is changing. And our officers have done a truly great job in tracking and responding to those, um, changing needs. May I refer members back to paragraph five on the summary page of this report? Our two most popular exhibitions contributing seventy per cent of service cost against a national average of thirty. So, I'll, I'll just let that sink in. An enormous amount of work has, um, gone into researching and modelling and future of culture and, and heritage and art services. And so we can continue to offer exciting, fun, refreshing, relevant and financially viable experiences. I had an arts background, and my arts education started, um, just north of Lincoln and in the city itself. I went to the art college. I used to do life drawing in the Usher Gallery, shocker. Um, I wouldn't support any solution that didn't provide future generations the same opportunities and benefits that launched my career in the creative industries. And finally, I'd just add something to the mix. Councillor Clark, um, raised concerns about, um, private companies. May I just remind people that artists, so when we're talking about introducing expertise of private companies, I'm sure councillor Clark wouldn't want us to exclude artists in that mix. Thank you, chairman.
Okay, thank you councillor Corrie. Councillor Linda Wooton?
Uh, thank you, chairman, uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, excellent idea to bring the registration services above the Usher Gallery, to use up that space, to utilise it. Because being involved in many citizenships, um, we would go to sort of the office in Lincoln, it was very crowded, no parking. And I think it would be a much better setting to have it there. And I'd also like to ask, um, things seem very Lincoln-centric to me. Have you actually spoken to people out in the sticks, like Granton Museum, for example, and other areas and other town? and other areas and other towns, when you've been sort of weighing up things? And that's my question. Thank you, chairman.
Okay, thank you councillor Wotton. Will, are you able to answer councillor Wotton's questions?
Yes, absolutely. So during the extensive engagement that took place at the beginning of 20, the public consultation, my team and I talked with a large number of stakeholders and members of the public to try and get that, a vision that is for the whole of the county. And there were some quite clear messages that came out of that. It is actually addressed in the executive papers of the time and that kind of acknowledged that at the moment, we do have quite a Lincoln-centric service in terms of what we specifically operate as Lincolnshire County Council. And I think we very much embrace wanting to look at that and work in a different way. I think Grantham is an excellent idea, so we have been working, not so much this year because of lockdown, a lot closer with Grantham Museum. We have collections that tell the story of Grantham that are currently in storage at Lincoln. Our aspiration is to work with Grantham Museum to get those collections into Grantham, where they can be used to tell the story of Grantham. And I think, again, there is an opportunity, and these are very early days yet, but there is an opportunity in terms of thinking of the supersite model, that actually there would be a benefit to looking at the development of a supersite somewhere more central to the county as well. Somewhere that would create a destination venue reachable both from all corners of the Greater Lincolnshire County in terms of our own residents, but also provides a location, a destination that people could visit, whether from the urban areas or whether it's with holidaymakers staying at the coast. So I think there's another opportunity there, additive vision for Greater Lincolnshire and bringing together all of the cultural players together into that vision. I think, again, we have an opportunity to make sure that we tell the stories of the whole county. Our county is one that is rich in literally every area and epoch of history, whether we're talking about sort of man's earliest inhabitation of the county, through the Stone Ages and the Bronze and the Iron Ages, right up to obviously the importance of the Romans, the Vikings and the Saxons across the whole of the county, not just Lincoln. But then taking that up to date and sort of what we've seen in the evolution of engineering in the 19th century, which again, was taking part in Gainsborough just as much as it was in Lincoln. We've got the huge story that aviation tells, which once again, is a story that goes across the whole of the county. So I think this is the beginning of us beginning to look at how we can actually bring all of that together. Some of that, I think, will be, as we briefly talked about before, seeing what the opportunities are around a community heritage model, how we can support smaller hubs, not replicating exactly what we've done with the library service, which of course, my colleague Louise will talk about shortly. But actually looking at the successes of that, because they have just been huge when we've actually begun to kind of put that vision, that power back into the hands of our local communities. So I think the number of different benefits are extensive.
Okay, well, thank you. The vision for a sup- sorry.
Thank you, chairman. I was just saying thank you to Will and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. The vision for a supersite, Will, somewhere in the centre of the county, has any thoughts gone into that, negotiations? Or any matters gone into that of where that could be?
I think we know where it could be, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's where it will be. I think is probably the simplest answer to that. I think there are a few different options that we could look at. But I think at this stage, it's primarily around the principle of the fact that actually, if we were to do a development more central to the county, it would provide that kind of destination venue. I think there are certain aspects that we would want to look at as part of choosing that location in terms of accessibility and space and it being sustainable. But at the moment, it is, it is a principle.
Okay, we've got councillor Cook wishing to speak. So councillor Cook, over to you.
Well, thank you, chairman. I just wanted to say that I think it's really important that we try and join partners in North and North East Lincolnshire to try and fulfil the full potential of our county, but not just in relation to arts and heritage, but in other functions of the council as well. Because it will improve funding and marketing opportunities and put Lincolnshire on the national and international stage. And I do understand that we need to explore all options to ensure the sustainability of our arts and heritage offer. Just to say, I'm really excited about the Wildlife Photography of the Year Exhibition. In Sleaford, social media has been flooded with amazing photographs of wildlife during COVID in particular. And I often see photographers along the River Sleaford. And I just think we need to capture this interest in wildlife by the public. And I'm sure that the exhibition will be a huge success, as indeed the dinosaur exhibition in the moon room was. So yeah, I'm really excited. I can't wait to see it. And we're done organising that, a big fan.
Okay, thank you. We do have a recommendation and we also have an alternative. If we were to go down the alternative route, Will, what real difference would that make if we had to fall back to the alternative and not include North Lincolnshire, North East Lincolnshire?
Maybe I can help here, chairman. I think, you know, we've got to have a vision for the next 10, 15, 20 years. And I think we've all felt that it's important that vision encompasses the whole of Greater Lincolnshire. I think based on conversations that certainly we've had and I've had with people in North and North East Lincolnshire, there's clearly a willingness to get involved in that. I can think particularly around archives. And there's, you know, already spoken a number of times about how we can have a joint archives that covers that whole of Greater Lincolnshire. So I think to not have it would actually be to the detriment of the current county. I think it adds value to what we currently have, if that helps.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'll just go back to councillor Clark. Councillor Clark, are you satisfied with the comments and questions and answers to your questions, whatever? Or would you like to propose something different to what we have in front of us?
Well, like I said, chair, the point is, I've heard what Mick and Will said. And, you know, basically, I'm not agreeing with it. I've got great concerns about the private companies. And I wasn't on about artists being private companies. What I said at the start of it, I am putting a motion forward if the council is serious about the future of supersites to include the Usher Gallery in the collection. I, you know, let the collection be collections and include the Usher Gallery in that supersite. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now with the speakers, can I just go back? Can I just get advice from Democratic Services about a motion there from councillor Clark here, where they'd see that?
Is there a second, though?
Doesn't appear to be at this stage. So do we have a second of a councillor Clark's motion? I'll just give plenty of time. Okay. Okay, in view of that, I would personally propose that the committee supports the vision for heritage services for the whole of Greater Lincolnshire, including the report. May I have a second for that proposal, please?
Happy to second that, chairman.
So councillor Stokes has seconded. Okay, I think we'll move on to the vote then now. So Nick will read out the name of each member present alphabetically. And you're asked to state for, against or abstain.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Aaron.
For.
Councillor Clark.
Against.
Councillor Cook.
For.
Councillor Cooper. Councillor Oxbey.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
For.
Councillor Stokes.
For.
Councillor Turner. Councillor Mrs Wotton.
For.
Councillor Ray Wotton.
For.
That's seven for and one against, chairman.
Okay, so that's fully agreed, thank you. We'll now move on then to item six of the agenda, which is the Heritage Service Update. This item is a further update on progress made relating to the future of the council's heritage service approved by the executive on the 3rd of September 2019. Again, the item was presented by Will Mason, Head of Culture. We'll take questions at the end of the report. So over to you, Will.
Thank you, chairman. And actually, a thank you to yourself and to the committee for the opportunity to return this month. When you kindly invited me last month, we were at a very delicate position in terms of some of the negotiations, particularly around Gainsborough Old Hall. So I apologise again that it had to be quite a short presentation last month and without a written report. So I'm pleased to be able to have presented a written report in advance for today's meeting and go into a little bit more detail about the progress against the recommendations that were approved last September. So just as that kind of reminder, we've talked about some of the principles this morning, but running through the proposals that are now actually kind of happening as we speak. And councillor Corey very kindly referenced some of the successes we've had with the exhibition programme in terms of looking differently at how we work. But underpinning all of this is the concept of both a cultural enterprise and also of the supersite model. That has gone very well. I think towards the end of this presentation, I'll give you a little bit of update again, updating even further from what's in the report around our recovery progress and how that is going, particularly doing all of that in the context of this kind of working differently model. I think specifically in terms of the actions, Gainsborough Old Hall is the one I'd like to just focus on briefly now. So just as a reminder, the decision was taken in September last year to service notice, to take advantage of the five-year rate clause between Lincolnshire County Council and English Heritage to return the Old Hall back to English Heritage. As I discussed last month, as a result of that, we have been in detailed conversation with English Heritage. Some of that has been quite protracted due to the lockdown and English Heritage actually furloughing about three quarters of their staff. So I wasn't able to confirm some of the detail of where we are with those kind of final conversations with English Heritage about what stays and what gets handed over. I am now, however, very happy to be able to confirm that with the handover due to take place in just over, oh, well, it's actually less than a week now, but it takes place at the beginning of next week, English Heritage have fully confirmed not just that they wish to retain the majority of the bacon loans of furniture and art that are on display in Gainsborough Hall, but some of our loan collections and actually some of the actual kind of set dressing and infrastructure that is currently in Gainsborough Hall. I'm also able to confirm a very positive response from English Heritage in terms of their planning for next year, whilst they are not in a position to be able to confirm as yet when they will reopen because of the ongoing impact of COVID. They have confirmed that they are working behind the scenes on kind of the revisiting of the curation of the Old Hall. And that is ongoing as we speak. So this is not disappearing into a void, as it were, and we are not handing over an empty hall. So I think that's been quite a significant piece of work. A lot of my team have been working very heavily over the last weeks to make sure that everything that isn't being handed over is actually taken out of the Old Hall and where there is a use of that to the wider service or to the wider county council. Those items have been kind of relocated, last few due to go out in the next couple of days. But actually, it's quite substantial in terms of affording, I suppose, a continuity of the story of Gainsborough Hall when it does reopen, hopefully next summer, under English Heritage's management as well as their loan issue. There has been some progress as well with regards to the windmills. And with a slight apology to councillor Wirth, because I don't think we've been able to update him on the very latest with regards to Alford Mill, but I've just had an update myself, that we are in a position now where property is working up different options with regards to the potential for the handover of Alford Mill to a group of organisations who wish to take over the mill and do more with it than has been previously done. And I think one of the really positive stories here is that actually, previously, Alford Mill was operated by a private business. And it was operated very successfully for many years as one in terms of maintaining both the heritage offer and the mill as being an important part of Lincolnshire's story while running a commercial enterprise from it as well. And those two things are mutually exclusive and they do fit very well with the concept of cultural enterprise. However, that has had not been the case in more recent years with the private company. So what we're looking at now is a very different offer and it's kind of local organisations taking over. And I think what this is a very strong part of, it's about having the right model for every different area of heritage. So I think has to be looked at in holistically in terms of that overall strategy, but also individually in terms of what is the best case, the best case for the community, the best case for preserving and encouraging the heritage to fly, the best case for sustainability as well. The other point, of course, we have discussed the Usher Gallery somewhat already in this meeting. I think it's, you know, it's only right that I kind of build on what councillor Wirth has sort of said. There are still options on the table with regards to the Usher Gallery that could still see the Usher Gallery having a majority of its base used to engage with the public about art and would see the two buildings of the museum and the art gallery functioning as a single supersite and working in a collaborative way in terms of co-curation of an exhibition programme. As we've talked about before, there are limitations with the Usher Gallery in terms of its environment, its security and just physically in terms of the space. So if those options were to be taken up and the Usher Gallery would stay open, I think you're just getting a slightly different model of supersite where you have the opportunity for some art to continue in the Usher Gallery, potentially focusing on the story of James Usher. But that again, you know, that's all up for discussion. But also enhancing the art in the way that we've done successfully in recent years with the temporary exhibition spaces, but also looking at developing some additional spaces as well. As a perfect example of that is Museum of the Moon, which has been mentioned a few times this morning, which did form part of the Arts Council National Portfolio Organisation arrangements, which meant that the Arts Council were able to fund putting that exhibition on. It was a contemporary art exhibition created by the artist Luke Jerem that we've worked with on a number of occasions and who has worked in different parts of the county as well. And shows you how you can have art across both sites very, very successfully. So I think that sort of, you know, there is an option still there where it would form part of a supersite. And actually, what we would be seeing if that option were to be taken up is a really strong opportunity to use that building for a mix of different public services and community uses that see more people engaging with a range of better services across the two buildings. In terms of the other kind of ongoing conversations, we have recently just reopened the conversations with regards to Discover Stamford. The kind of communications that are coming out of Stamford are still very positive. They're very keen to be able to increase the stories that's told of Stamford, which is the finest stone town in all of England. And I think that we're still just scratching the surface of some of this. And I think this is where actually this wider vision of Greater Lincolnshire helps almost fill in, not necessarily filling in the gaps, I suppose, but helps expand the vision that we talked about last year. So I think that's really positive. Couple of other points I did want to kind of raise that were included in the report as well are the consideration of trust status. So this has been brought to scrutiny before. It was a couple of years ago. At the time, it wasn't considered something that was the right model for the heritage service. I think it is right that we do look at that again and ensure that we are fully informed on whether it is the right model for the future. I think it's important that the timing of that is correct. It's very important that if there were to be any consideration of a change in governance, it needs to be given the best opportunity to succeed if indeed the benefits are there for it to be the better model. So it's very important that any model is allowed to mature over time and that we're able to kind of embrace and engage with this Greater Lincolnshire vision in a way that makes more of the county's heritage and culture sustainable. Finally, just as a small update to the ongoing recovery post-lockdown of the heritage service in the last 24 hours, I had shared with me some quite astonishing statistics with regards to Lincoln Castle's performance since we've reopened. And we've talked before, particularly at the castle and the collection, where there is less limitation in terms of how many people we can get into the buildings in a COVID-secure way. The performance has been ranging from 40 to 60% of expected visitors for this time of year compared with a national average, which is seen somewhere between about 8 and 20%. What's happened in the last few days is- What's happened in the in the last few days is this, we've got to confirm so far in October. Um, Lincoln Castle is not only well into the kind of above sixty percent, but when you factor in the way that we're working now. In this cultural enterprise model, um, admittedly factoring in as well the 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 excellent kind of VAT. Um, arrangements that have been put in place for the hospitality sector, such that the the VAT rate and admissions is is at five percent. Only at the moment, although we're getting about sixty-eight percent of our normal visitors. We're getting over ninety percent of our normal income that we would expect from this time of year. And in addition to this, I I've just had reported to me as well that yesterday at the collection was the busiest day that we've had all year. So the the continued recovery is is showing that we are a very healthy service and the direction of travel, I think, is very strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Well, now I open up for questions, but whilst I'm waiting for questions, um. Just wanted to mention about Burley Marsh Windmill, I believe that was the one that lost its sales back in February. Has progress been made on the the restoration of the mill of mill?
Yes, yes, it has, councillor Pepper. Um, I'll be honest, it's slow going. Um, during lockdown, some work was able to continue. Um, quite quite key to the future of the the mills in in Lincolnshire. Has been has been ensuring that we have, uh, a a high quality and sustainable. Um, partnership with at least one millwright that is able to, um, not only carry out the works, but also make sure that we are. Looking after the mills in the correct way to, um, retain them for future generations. Um, we took a little bit of a a hit earlier this year. When the millwright that we have been working with in recent years, uh, informed us that he was making the decision to not work in that sector anymore. Uh, we went to the entered into an interim arrangement with with a different millwright from out of the county. But that that only really worked as as an interim arrangement, but I am now pleased to be able to report that Lincolnshire County Council's property partners. Have now set up a a new arrangement, um, of a more permanent basis with with a very well-regarded. Uh, millwright who who isn't based in Lincolnshire, but isn't based far outside of Lincolnshire. And actually, we're already starting to kind of see the benefit of 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 his kind of input into maintenance and also the work on on Burley Mart. It will be a long road because it wasn't just the sales, it was damage to the entire top cap of the mill. Um, but we are committed to making sure that that work does continue.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Um, I can't see anyone wishing to ask any questions, but I'll still hang out for a little bit longer. No, assuming everyone is happy with that, so, uh. I'll go ahead and propose that the committee receive the report and endorse continued work on the recommendations. Previously approved by the Executive in September two thousand nineteen. Um, rather than going through everyone, does anyone dissent? Does anyone dissent to that proposal? And also in saying so, could I have a second of that?
I'll second chairman, councillor Ronnox be here.
Councillor Ronnox is seconded. Anyone dissent to the proposal? Okay, no one's dissented, so I'll, um, take it that that's all now agreed. Thank you. Thank you, Will, for both of those presentations, which have been very interesting. Thank you. Seems to go on quiet. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
We'll move on to. Yeah, we'll move on to item seven then, registration and celebratory services annual report. This item is an update on the registration and celebratory services. The item will be be presented by Sarah Barry, Acting Assistant Director of Full Protection. And Julie Waller, who's acting Head of Registration. And again, we'll take questions at the end. So over to Sarah and Julie.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, it's nice to be here again today. Um, so today we're going to talk to you about registration. Um, traditionally, we've brought a dual paper that looks at registration and coroners. Uh, but we thought it was worth splitting the two and I'll bring a paper around coroners, uh, at a slightly later meeting. So today we focus on, uh, registration services, uh, registration and celebratory services because the service does cover. Uh, both the registration of births, deaths, uh, and stillbirths. Uh, but also looks at marriages, civil partnerships and citizenship-related ceremonies. In addition to that, the service also provides some, um, discretionary services. For example, naming ceremonies, renewal of vows, funeral and memorial services. So the service does provide, um, to Lincolnshire at a time when families are going through immense change. Um, so the service that they provide is very customer-centred. And really important part of, uh, the transition periods of families. The service is fully supported by the fees charged across the complete range of services. Um, and this report not only focuses on the activity in nineteen twenty. But also looks at the impact that Covid has had on the service, uh, which has been fairly dramatic in parts. So just as a reminder, the registration service is accessible at twelve physical offices around the county. Um, many of these sites did have to close during the pandemic. Uh, but they are now all open with the exception of Bourne, unfortunately, which, um, the size and shape of. Bourne doesn't allow us to open in a Covid-safe manner. So we are exploring other, um, premises. To provide the service in Bourne. Uh, we, all the services, services have been reviewed to ensure they can be provided in a Covid-safe way. And we have, um, the service has adapted many of their processes quite drastically. Some through government change, uh, and some through sort of local practice. Uh, the customer service sensor still provides, uh, initial contact and an appointment booking service. Although we are hoping to introduce a new, more digitized, uh, booking service in the near future. Customer su- customer satisfaction remains very high. And in the most recent satisfaction survey, a hundred percent of respondents rated the service excellent, very good or satisfactorily. So really pleased with that continued focus, uh, on customer service and the good feedback we're getting. If I can take you to, uh, appendix A, which details some of the, um. Our, uh, performance figures for the county, uh, in nineteen twenty. And I guess, uh, of significance, if I can bring your to your attention. Uh, specifically a number of things, uh, which have changed during the year. There's been a shift, uh, to civil partnerships, uh, for some opposite, uh, same sex, uh, sex couples. Uh, and that's reflected in the reduction of marriages. There's also been a price increase from four pounds to eleven pounds for copy certificates. So this has seen a reduction in express certificate requests. And, um, you'll see some figures on European Settlement Scheme. Um, this was a scheme that supported those individual, European individuals. Who wanted to become part, uh, of the, uh, of the UK. Um, uh, numbers. Did drop off once the government, uh, had installed an app on both Apple, uh, and Android systems. Uh, but you you saw quite a lot of activity around that area. So on to Covid now and the impact of Covid. Um, this has been quite dramatic on the service and I have to give thanks to Julie and her team. For the still ongoing changes and response they've made to Covid. It has been an ever-changing process, uh, and I'll go through, uh, the impact on each of the bits of the service. For birth registrations, these were halted completely in April by the General Register Office and didn't commence again until June. Uh, but we were able to, uh, put a new low-contact process in place. Where, um, as much as possible of the certificates are, um, completed, uh, via the phone and and by forms. And then the, um, remainder is done in a very quick appointment, uh, with the informant. We did have a backlog, a backlog of around one thousand five hundred registrations, but we've nearly worked our way through those. Um, and with only seventy-six outstanding. So, um, that's been down to the hard work of the team. Uh, and completely adapting to a new process. Death registrations, obviously, um, the peak in deaths, uh, due to Covid was seen in April. Uh, and thankfully, the General Register Office did introduce, uh, a new process. Which saw direct notification by doctors, uh, into the service of the death registration, uh, notice. Uh, which was then followed up by, uh, by the registrar contacting the family by telephone. Rather than relying on the family making that first call and removing the need for, uh, a visit to to an office. While lockdown was in place, this worked really well, uh, as most people were around to take that phone call back from the registration service. However, as things opened up, that became slightly more difficult. We're continually having to adapt, uh, the service. Um, and putting alternative options in place. We're working quite closely with comms and the web team to make sure. We inform people of of that new process. Marriages and civil partnerships, this has seen the greatest area of disruption. Uh, an ongoing demand for advice, rebooking, changing bookings, uh, and costs. Um, and through these sort of changing rules around ceremonies, uh, and I suppose the. The the realization that this wasn't going to be over in any short period of time and, uh. Couples making decisions about their, uh, relationships and partnerships. We did make a decision, uh, supported by councillor Worth. Uh, that, uh, a notice of marriage, which normally only lasts for twelve months, would normally require a new notice to be made. Which would incur a further charge on each of the individuals involved in the notice. Uh, and following a decision with, uh, councillor Martin Hill and councillor Worth. We decided to waive that, uh, re, uh, notice fee, uh, which really pleased about and has supported. Couples who have been drastically impacted in other ways, uh, around their ceremonies. Although the cancellation of ceremonies and the simplification of ceremonies due to the small nature that they are now. Has significantly impacted on services' income stream in twenty twenty-one. And although we are planning, uh, a busy twenty-one, twenty-two, assuming Covid has left us. Uh, it it is causing issues around income. Citizenship ceremonies, um, were initially cancelled. However, we have been able to put in a low-contact process in place since twenty, uh, in since July twenty twenty. And around ninety citizens have had individual walkthrough ceremonies ceremonies to clear the backlog. Um, unfortunately, that means we haven't been able to have dignity, uh, dignities, uh. From, uh, the organisation to present certificates and be part of a much more grander ceremony. But we hope to return to that as soon as we're allowed. So in conclusion, um, nineteen twenty, we we continue to meet the needs of Lincolnshire people to a very high standard. But during the first part of twenty twenty-one, significant impact of Covid has meant that the teams worked really hard. To adapt services and keep up that, uh, good work. Um, and looking forward, we will be looking at more digitizing the service. And, um, putting more innovative solutions in place, but this will depend on, uh. The the General Register Office probably adapting and modernising some of their services. That's the end of my report, uh, Chair, and myself and Julie are here to answer any questions, uh, if they arise. Chair, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, just while we're waiting for any members to ask a question. Inquest, I don't think we mentioned that, and that's just a bit of an aside to what you do, but I know there's a backlog on those at one point. Has the backlog been, um, has it, is it now caught up?
So councillor Pepper, that will all be covered in the paper that I'll bring to, uh, on on the coroner's service at our next scrutiny meeting. Um, but, um, but there always has been a bit of a backlog, but actually the pandemic. Has allowed, hasn't had a direct impact on the coroner's service apart from inquest. Uh, so it has allowed quite a bit of catch-up work to be done.
Okay, thank you. Can't see any questions coming through. Sarah, the table on, uh, page thirty-three. There's an old saying, when one goes out of the world, another one comes in, but, uh, looking at the births and deaths over the five-year period. There's always been more deaths than births. Do we know how this compares to the national average? Is this a Lincolnshire thing or?
Um, I think generally, uh, the geography in me would say that actually our population is getting older. And, uh, isn't, is is remaining fairly steady, but Lincolnshire itself does have an aging population. Um, uh, and I would have, I don't know, I I won't make a guess at that, but I don't know if Julie can add to that. Of her national knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the difficulty as well is we've got quite a lot of people come on holiday to the coast as well. Um, like you said, it's the elderly generation, but I think. We are, I think it is around about the average, um, what we would expect to see.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, that could really could make make a difference, couldn't it? To with influx to the coast during the, uh, summertime. Clearly deaths are registered where the person dies, so that could. Make a difference to the figures, couldn't it? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councillor Linda Wooton wishes to speak.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, thank you for your presentation. Uh, you've already. Answered my question, what is a walkthrough ceremony? So I think I understand that. Thank you. Um, could you just tell me what the European settlement is, please, that's in your, um, chart? Settlement scheme. I've no idea what that is, and I'm is, and I'm sure you do.
I'll let Julie answer that one. She's she's here for the technicalities.
Okay. Um, we used to have what we called the Nationality Checking Service, where if people wanted to apply to be a British citizen. They brought all the papers into us, we checked over to make sure it was correct, we photocopied it and and sent it off to the Home Office. That meant that, um, the individual was able to retain their passports and all their original documents. And that changed to the European Settlement Service where, um, the Home Office actually created an app. Um, where actually individuals could actually go onto this app itself and and upload all the relevant documentation. Um, but originally it, they, the app didn't work on, I think it was Android phones, you had to have an iPhone. Um, where a lot of people didn't actually have a phone that was compatible with the app. So what, some some local registration offices decided that they would actually provide that service. So again, it's where people brought the the information to us, um, they did part of it, we completed it and sent it all off to. Um, the Home Office. That's the start of the journey to become a British citizen.
Okay, that makes, because I think that citizenships and sometimes things were queried, so that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for that. Thank you, Amanda, as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Can't see any questions coming through. Just give it another second or two. Okay, so the actions were to, uh, that were requested to consider and comment on the progress. Within the registration celebratory services and highlight any additional comments for consideration. We've exhausted any questions, so I'll propose that the committee receive the report. And note the performance of the registration and celebratory service over the past year and the challenges faced as a result of Covid nineteen. Does anyone dissent to, well, I'll take a, I'll I'll get a second to first, so I've proposed. Anyone wish to second that?
Happy to second, Chairman.
Okay, that was councillor Stokes who seconded. So does anyone dissent? Does anyone dissent to the proposal? No, no one's dissenting, so thank you. That's all agreed and thank you, um, Sarah and Julie for that presentation. Thank you. We'll move on to item eight, which is Community Hub Year Four Update. This report is to provide an update on the performance of the Community Hub model across the county. This item will be presented by Louise Egan, who is the Library and Heritage Client Lead. And we'll, again, we'll take questions after the report. So over to you, Louise.
Thank you, Chair. Um, apologies, my video isn't currently working, so, um, I'm not able to include it for this, um, item. But as everyone is aware, or hopefully aware, in two thousand and sixteen, Lincolnshire County Council. Introduced a new model of service delivery for the library service. And this saw Greenwich Leisure Limited award. And this saw Greenwich Leisure Limited awarded a five-plus-five-year contract to deliver the main 15 core libraries across the county, with community groups then approached to deliver the previous tier-three libraries under the banner of community hubs. Now, this is year four that we are presenting on today, which is 2019 to 20, and the activity delivered within the year by the community hubs. So for those that may not be aware, these are community-run facilities operated on the whole by a range of volunteers with a grant agreement with the county council to deliver a library service to that particular village and community for a minimum of six hours a week for 58 weeks of the year. Now, obviously, we do have a range of community hubs and some are well in advance of those hours that are delivered for their community area. The reason they're deemed a community hub is because we wanted to take a more proactive approach with these groups and these assets for the communities and to make sure that other services could also be delivered from there rather than just a traditional library service. So many of the groups have got other activities running alongside the traditional library service, many different groups that are running for communities, including sort of the knitting natters, colouring groups, jigsaw groups, and about trying to ensure that the services and activities in those particular hubs are linked to the demand of their particular communities and the focus for those individuals. So our current position is that we've still got 34 community hubs in operation across the whole county. And there is a list of those on page 36 for you. It's probably worth noting that the Airline Community Hub is still being managed and delivered by Greenwich Leisure Limited at the minute. And this is because our former community hub tenant did enter administration and liquidisation. And Greenwich Leisure Limited took over the particular group and site to ensure that that provision and service remained and continued for our residents in that area. However, apologies, discussions have continued with another provider to be able to take that site over and to operate in line with all of the other community hubs. So GLL would be removing themselves from that particular site. However, as a result of Covid, those discussions have taken slightly longer than we would have originally anticipated because of the providers, all the responsibilities that they had to focus on during the pandemic. But I'm pleased to say those discussions have continued and we are picking those discussions back up. So I'm hopeful that the next time that I present these particular scrutiny, I'll be able to say that we've successfully transitioned that site back over to a community hub model. In terms of service delivery update for the 2019/20 year, I would say it's pretty much the same as what we've presented on previous years. The community hubs have been going from strength to strength, both in terms of the number of customers that are using the site, the issues that those sites are experiencing, and also those additional activities, the story times, the craft activities that they've also been able to offer at those sites. It's also worth noting throughout that last year, the main piece of work that's happened across all of the sites is the transition from the LCC IT network over to the GLL, the Greenwich Leisure Limited IT provider. So this is in line with a wider piece of work that we were doing across all of the library service. But in this last particular year, we've ensured that new computers have been installed, all of the hubs, both for the volunteers to use and also for the members of public to use. That's included new printers being installed and also a transfer over to a new library management system. So this is the library catalogue that people go on and can review what books are available, what items are available to be issued and learnt themselves. Obviously, GLL have continued throughout that last year to provide advice, operational support to each of those groups, and have got really strong relationships with each and every one of them. However, within the latter part of 1920, obviously, we did see the Covid pandemic pick up. And in March, all of the community hubs did close in line with government advice. Now, the majority of those hubs are operated by volunteers who fall either within a slightly older population or have underlying health conditions. So as a result, it's taken a little bit longer to be able to get into the recovery phase for the community hubs. And I'd just like to point out, apologies, there is a typo on page 37. And at the time of writing the report, it was 23 sites that had kind of service delivery. However, since the time of creating the report, I can say it's actually 26 hubs that are now open and operational across the county. And 90 of these have entered into the browsing phase. So this is where customers can actually enter the site, browse the stock, select the items that they wish to issue to themselves and then leave. And we've still got seven hubs that are on the click-and-collect approach. So this is where a customer will pre-reserve or request items of material at a given site, will then attend and collect that material and not have to enter the site itself. Of those 26 hubs, 11 of them have currently got public network machines available for customers to be able to go in and use. And we've currently just got the eight sites that aren't currently operational. However, myself and GLL are working with each and every one of those to be able to get them to the point where they can open the doors either on a click-and-collect approach or on a browsing approach and to be able to offer the services back to those eight communities. And in terms of when we've looked at whether sites can reopen, we have got a criteria around certain measures that need to be in place. Each and every one of the hubs has provided a Covid-safe risk assessment that goes through to make sure that they've got screens in place, they've got the appropriate PPE, that the QR codes are available, that one-way systems have been implemented where April, we've got quarantine trolleys for stock that's being returned to make sure that that's going into quarantine for the 72-hour period. And we go through this with each and every one of the hubs. The GLL staff members, the library development officers are going out and meeting with those hubs, going through it all in detail to make sure that they can pass on their experiences and their best practice to make sure that these sites and the volunteers are set up and are as safe as possible to then ensure the safety of our customers and our users. Thanks very much, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Louise. We'll now open up for questions. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Louise. I think you know what I'm gonna say. The Booton Community Hub is an issue I raised with you before. And, you know, my issue is the actual sign outside. Because when you look at the sign, it's very difficult to see it's an actual library. For me, this illustrates the fact, when you get a private company in, they're not really interested in serving the community. I believe you've said before you're gonna look at the sign. What's your opinion of that sign? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. I think it goes back to the ethos of what we want the community hubs to be. So yes, they are operating as the library, but they are there as hubs for that community. So it's about being able to be flexible for those organisations and the volunteer groups. And in this case, a church worship organisation that have taken the site on. So it's about making sure that they've also got church worship that happens in that particular area. They've also got a cafe that they're developing for that particular site. And what we've tried to do is ensure that we are flexible to allow organisations to have these other amenities within that site to make sure that we can have the community hub being sustainable moving forwards. Obviously, the county council does give a small financial grant to each of these sites. But the additional services that they provide from the hubs ensures that they can be sustainable for a longer term and meet the needs of each of those communities. So I think that's why it's more about the emphasis is on a hub that provides the library service. And indeed, in this particular instance, that's why the sign outside of the site says there is a hub. And then underneath the line of saying it's a hub, it does say that it provides the library services there as well. What I would also say is that we do ensure that we promote through LCC's website and also through GLL's, all of the community hubs where library services are available and indeed their other offers, such as the public networks, the printing, the photocopying facilities. So we do also ensure that we're advertising that way, that Booton and Birchwood are both libraries whilst they are operating under this hub model.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that's specific to just Booton Library. I think, Louise, I think far as I can see, most of them are called hubs, aren't they, as opposed to libraries?
They are, yes, Chair. All 34 sites, we refer to as the community hub model. As again, just so that we can ensure that we're promoting the other elements and facilities within the sites. And as far as I'm aware, we've not had any other concerns raised around the term of hub over a library.
Is it still the same, Louise, that books are left for 72 hours to sort of self-sanitise?
It is, Chair, yes. So we've retained that government advice, apologies, and also from the library's Connected Task Force. So they're saying that we, any books that are returned from customers are left on the shelf untouched for 72 hours to ensure that they go through that quarantine period before they're back on the shelves for the customers to loan out and to borrow.
Okay. Is there any kind of standard policy across all the hubs regarding sanitising of chairs and PC equipment and that kind of thing?
Yep, indeed. So that's what we're making sure is in all of the risk assessments before we give approval for any of the sites to reopen, either as the click-and-collect or as the browsing. So we make sure that there's the sanitisation point on arrival along with the NHS tracking trace poster and provision of information being able to take there. We ensure that all the hubs, if they are taking personalised details, that they're only retained for 21 days. And then the retention policy then comes in for that information to be disposed of. The sanitised stations throughout all of the hubs for those that are open and browsing, we ensure that both volunteers and customers have got access to the wipes and bacteria wipes to be wiping down chairs, mouses, keyboards, computers. Where hubs have offered the public network machines, the public computers to use, we've made sure that they are spaced out so that not all of the PCs are currently in operation so that we can ensure that there is that two-metre distance between members of the public coming in and using those. And there's usually a 15-minute period where one customer will leave using the PC. That will get wiped down before the next customer can then come in and use it. And again, PC use for customers, whether in core sites or in hubs, is on a pre-bookable system only. So customers can't just walk in and use them. And that's to ensure that we have got all these additional cleaning measures in place.
Okay, Louise, Louise, thank you for that. Satisfied my mind on that. Any further questions? Can't see anything coming through. No, therefore, I propose that the committee receive the report and continue to endorse the community hub model as community-run facilities. And thank all the volunteers, and I mean that, thank all the volunteers who help keep them running. Does anyone dissent? Again, I'll just, as I proposed, I'll get a second to for that. Councillor Clark, I believe is seconding. So councillor, is that correct? You're seconding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So does anyone dissent? Does anyone dissent to that proposal? If so, type in the chat bar now. Okay, no, so thank you all for that. We'll now move on to item nine, which is the Public Protection and Community Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme for the coming year to ensure that scrutiny activity is focused where it can be of greatest benefit. This item will be presented by Daniel Steele. So Daniel, over to you for the last time.
Thank you, Chairman. So yes, the work programme is included in the pack on page 40. The next meeting is on the 8th of December 2020. And that will be the usual Road Safety Partnership annual report. Steve Bachelor will be coming to talk about that. There'll also be the Coroner's Service report, we've reached that one that Sarah mentioned. And also the annual prevent review report, which again is another item that Paul Drury will attend on. And that's the work programme. If there are any additional items that the committee feel that's included, then they can praise those now. Thank you.
No questions coming through, so I propose that we accept that. Anyone second?
Happy to second, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Stokes. Anyone dissent? All right, so thank you for that. Thank you, Daniel. That was the work programme is agreed. We now close this part of the meeting and sit as the Crime and Disorder Scrutiny Committee, which is item 10 of your agenda. Item 10 is Modern Slavery. This item provides an overview of both the current and impending statutory requirements placed upon Lincolnshire County Council within the Modern Slavery Act 2015. This item will be presented by Jonny Goldsmith, who is the Community Safety Strategy Coordinator, and Claire Newborn, who is the Acting Joint Head of Safer Communities. And again, we'll take questions at the end of the report. So over to Jonny and Claire to present.
Thank you, councillor. Given that the author of the report actually is Jonny, I have to give credit to Jonny for the report. He's also the lead for Modern Slavery within the Community Safety Service and supports the county council in terms of its endeavours in respect of modern slavery and ensuring that as a local authority, we are doing what we need to do to ensure we're addressing modern slavery or any risks of that. And so if that was okay, I'll pass over to Jonny to just summarise the report that he's produced and take any questions collectively. Thank you.
Claire, thank you. So over to Jonny.
Thank you, Claire. And thank you, everybody, for allowing me to come here today to talk about a topic that's very close to my heart. So modern slavery, it is a very complex crime and often hidden. And actually, the term itself can be quite confusing. So when you think about modern slavery, please think about it as an umbrella term that encompasses lots of different things, whether that be human trafficking, whether that be slavery, servitude or forced labour. In terms of the scale of the issue and what we're dealing with, it's very, very complicated, as I've said. But it's also can be quite difficult to understand the number of people that are in slavery at any one time across the UK. So there are various different sources that have tried to put an estimate on the issue. And we've had numbers ranging from as low as 10,000 to upwards of 100,000. And actually, I think the most recent source, most recent report that I read estimated there were 136,000 victims at any one time. And the report highlights a number of different duties placed upon the county council within the Modern Slavery Act. But I want to focus in particular on section 54, well, section 54 duty, because this is a duty that has been within the Act since its enactment, but it hasn't necessarily impacted upon the county council. So section 54 duty is, it requires, or it did require commercial companies with an annual turnover of greater than £36 million to produce a Modern Slavery statement. And what that requires them to do, or required them to do, was to report on the things that they were doing within their organisation to tackle modern slavery within their supply chains. There's a little bit of history within the report in terms of that particular duty. But to summarise, the government have essentially extended that section 54 duty to public authorities. So it's a recent change. And it was only announced in September this year, towards the end of September. So we haven't got the detail in terms of what that will require the county council to do exactly. But what we require the county council to do exactly. But what we do know, that we will be mandated to report on, on a brand-new government-run reporting service, the steps that we're taking to prevent modern slavery in our supply chains. And at a minimum, it will include the six points that I've included within the report, but it may include more than that. As I say, it's only just been announced by central government, while we're waiting for more detail. The statement itself will require a sign-off from the chief executive. And at present, at the time of writing the report, obviously, as I've said, the changes have only just recently been announced. And all of this information is to be presented to the corporate leadership team with a number of recommendations to hopefully ensure that we're up to ensure that we are continuing to meet our requirements within the Modern Slavery Act. So in terms of, in terms of modern slavery and Lincolnshire County Council's role within the Safer Lincolnshire partnership, so as a member, we're a key contributor. And when I say that, we provide a resource, a committee safety strategy coordinator to coordinate the work of the partnership and drive the agenda forward across the county. So that resource is essentially me. But I'm not the only person within the county council that contributes to that. There's lots of work in partnership with the Safeguarding Adults Board, with the Children's Partnership, across Trading Standards. And I think that's in recognition that actually, modern slavery cuts across so many different areas of council business, it's important that we take a whole organisational approach to try tackling the problem. So what I've outlined within the report is the key areas of activity for the partnership. And those key areas of activity have been informed by not only partners who sit within the Safer Lincolnshire partnership, but also from the recommendations within the Safeguarding Adults Review that was published in twenty nineteen. Some of you may be familiar, but that review was commissioned by the Safeguarding Adults Board following what at the time was the largest police operation across the UK in terms of trying to tackle modern slavery, and that was Operation Pottery. And that was all centred around one particular family who were exploiting people for their financial gain, primarily through forced labour. So I don't intend to go through the four, the four key pieces of work in detail, but there are a couple of things that I would like to just point out and just bring to your attention that sort of highlights what we as a county councillor are doing, not only to improve our own, our own knowledge internally, but also to support partners. So we have developed a online e-learning course, which is available to all county council staff, but also all partners across Lincolnshire. And the other thing that I'd like to bring to your attention, and for people that are on social media, you may have seen this in the last week or so. So October the eighteenth was Anti-Slavery Day, and the county council led on a social media campaign to raise awareness on modern slavery. So we were really, really delighted to be able to partner with the CLURE initiative. They're an initiative that was launched when the Modern Slavery Act was enacted. And it's Church of England Initiative, and they are very well-placed nationally. So to get them on board to help to support us with the campaign, we were delighted with. And they've also helped us to develop some Lincolnshire-specific resources to raise awareness of modern slavery across our communities. So you may have seen some of the, or may have seen the social media campaign yourself. As I say, it was led by the county council. We had support from partners who sit on the Safer Lincolnshire partnership, and the campaign itself culminated with Lincoln Cathedral being illuminated yellow on the evening of Anti-Slavery Day, Sunday, October the eighteenth. And there was also quite a striking exhibition that was in situ within the dean's garden at Lincoln Cathedral in the week leading up to the campaign, to Anti-Slavery Day itself. As I say, I don't intend to go through the key pieces of work in detail. And I'd like to open the floor up to any questions, if anybody has any.
Okay. Johnny, thank you. I consider councillor Ray Woodhouse a question for you.
Yes, thank you very much, indeed, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your report. Monday slavery is very important. A couple of years ago, superintendent Chris Davidson came to SKDC Communities Committee to present a programme there on the modern day slavery. And in Beverleyshire, where I served, we had one of the biggest raids in history. Two hundred and fifty officers raided a traveller's site where men were found to be living in concentration camp-style conditions, forced in servitude, given just a couple of minutes to eat their meals each day. And one man was told, your mother is dead to you now, your family is dead to you now, we are your family. And they were kept in imprisonment for nearly eighteen years, so a very big trial. Chris Davidson mentions about nail bars and car washes. And how can we, as local councillors, ensure that those operations are not entrapping people to work in slavery?
Thank you for your question, councillor Orton. That's a really good question. And actually, one of the things we did as part of the social media campaign was to try and support members of our communities to be able to engage with services and support those victims when they do have concerns. So there were various different tools that were available to everybody. So there's a fantastic charity called Unseen, who are an anti-slavery charity across the UK. And they have an application that can be downloaded free of charge. And that is the application, actually, and our Lincolnshire specific resources that we're promoting. And what you're able to do on that app, once you've downloaded it, it's got a lot of information around modern slavery, a lot of information around spotting the signs and what they are. And then what you're also able to do is to report your concerns. So it's not where you would report any immediate concerns, because that would always be to, obviously, police direct. But if something just doesn't feel right, if something, you see something within your community and you think that's a bit odd, you're able to report your concerns by that app. And then that charity will direct it to the most appropriate agency who'll then be able to provide support.
If I could ask a further question, Chair, on that particular subject, on car washes? Do we have any process of checking those organisations to make sure that the people that are working there are not enslaved?
So we don't, as a county council, what we saw, we'll apologise if you can hear my dog in the background, that's the joys from working from home. But specifically in terms of car washes, you are right, they are recognised as being a high-risk sector. So there is an app by the CLURE initiative that was launched called the Safer Car Wash App. And again, that's a really fantastic tool that you can download to your phone free of charge. And if you use a car wash, then there's lots of questions that you are asked and you complete by that app, i.e. did the person have health and safety equipment? What was the cost? How many people were there? And then all that information from the CLURE initiative is passed on to local police forces to use as intelligence.
Okay, right. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Oxby followed by councillor Clark. So councillor Oxby first, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I don't know if Johnny heard on the news last night that slavery, modern slavery was mentioned. And I quite catched up, but I got the impression that to sort of believe that those using these services could now be probably prosecuted, especially in the case of where prostitution is used, mainly for European girls that come across for a better life and getting entrapped in slavery. I don't know if you know any further details. It's something I just caught last night on the news, but didn't hear all the details. I don't know if you had any further information.
Sorry, councillor Oxby. I've just actually returned from annual leave after ten days off, so I didn't see the report that you mentioned last night. I think forced prostitution is, and sexual exploitation is, again, a common type of exploitation that are experienced not only by European nationals that are trafficked from other parts of the world into the UK, but also by British nationals as well. But in terms of your specific report that you're referring to, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, so I wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Yeah, it was quite brief, and I did miss it. But I'm sure something else will come out that would work in due course, so we'll keep our eyes and ears open. And I think what you said before regarding actually seeing if slavery is prevalent or not, I think years ago, let us be honest, we always saw the white man exploiting the black man, if you pardon the pun. But these days, it's the white man exploiting the white man. I think that's a more difficult situation to identify. Just a comment there.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clark?
And Chairman, Johnny, one of my other joys of being a councillor is that I'm a governor of school. I know it's a school, there's a big sign outside that says school. What the question is, is I attended an online course about trafficking people. I never realised that what people do, it's not just an individual, it's a whole family that will be moved over so people can claim the social